Okay, this is a step we need to make for the work that has commenced on our election board renovation, as well as the cemetery and recreation buildings that have gotten underway. It's similar to the ones we did for P&amp;J when we did the Health and Human Services up there, and then also the resolution that we did for the middle school. And I just need the board to approve it so that when we do go out to do the lending for those three buildings, or those three projects, that we can claw back to any dispersment that we made prior to the financing.
We have motion to approve this. How is that going to stay? All the same.
They are all the same, yeah.
Would that say on the name of motion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Jay can say.
Jay can say.
I got that.
Uh huh, okay. And then the second, I guess, before, or we'll do the project resolution under the ARPA after Mr. Moreno goes through his information.
All right, you ready?
We're ready.
Good afternoon, commissioners and everybody that's attended. Glad you're here. We put together kind of a little bit of information. We wanted to try to put something out there. Ultimately, it's something that's more like a workshop, I hope, so that we can kind of work through any kind of things we want to see projected going forward and absolutely get some money into the hands of people that certainly deserve it and earn it. So we just put some ideas together, and I may let Becky go over a little bit of all the, sort of the rules and the guidance that we've gotten so far. There are a lot of things out there. There's a lot of things that are changing on a daily basis, and there's a lot of things that are uncertain going forward. And we'll cover a little bit of that with this outline that we gave you, some findings and recommendations. The bottom line is, we can do some things now, which I think we should, but we also need to kind of do our due diligence going forward in the long run. Basically, this is what we know now. The findings of U.S. Treasury guidance will not be released until at least October 2021. What that means is, they're really being quite silent. What that means in the long run is, there's still some questions, and we outline them here in some of the paperwork we've provided you, on how and who might actually be available to get that money, who qualifies, so to speak. And there's some going back and forth on the percentage, I think it's 51% of their time, but ultimately, in a lot of ways, it looks like it's up to local government to make those kind of decisions and how we want to proceed going forward. And that's the decision on, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, who our essential workers are that might fall under that category. However, there are some things that we don't really have control over, and whether it's being taxed, or how they tax it, how the retirement is going to be, they've not really given that direction. So with that said, if you want to go over a little bit of that.
Sure. Yeah, so the one thing I'm starting to have in all of this, this point, is two things. Number one, the rules change every day. I'm in a webinar almost every day, whether it be from the National Association, the county governments, whether it be leaving municipalities, UNC School of Government, or NCACC. And the line that I'm getting, especially from the School of Government and the North Carolina Treasury, is the watchword is caution. There is some latitude where boards can make decisions as to who they would call essential workers. However, because the final regs have not come down, there's questions as to who qualifies within certain categories. The one thing that seems to be very certain is that anyone who has been on the front lines, and I think I mentioned this the other night in the board meeting, as far as the response is concerned, who has direct risk of contracting the virus, who has dealt with, dealing with people with the virus, or who could potentially have the virus, that's pretty clear that they're going to be considered, basically, a no-brainer for what we call premium pay. What gets fuzzy, though, is questions like, outside of those public safety arenas like EMS, help or public health, if we had workers who worked and helped, but they're not in departments that are primarily involved in COVID response, whether the Treasury will say that they were considered essential. And this was a big question in the CARES Act as well. I don't know if you remember or not, but they kept going back and forth about human services employees in the CARES Act, as to whether they would be considered essential. The other piece is, let's say you've got, this is a question that the School of Government said we need to be cautious about, let's say you've got admin people who are working in public safety departments, or other departments, and they may have had some exposure, but not like the frontline people, will they qualify as well? So we have lots of things that are not defined at this point. The other side is, and this is the reason that the School of Government and the North Carolina Treasury said be cautious, is they said, what are the ramifications of county officials making what I would call, quote unquote, liberal interpretation of who is defined as essential, and then have it overturned by the U.S. Treasury and the state auditor? Because the state auditor is our first line of accountability. The ramification of that is a payback. So if you recall the other night in the board meeting, I said I had 24 hours to turn around a report on the CARES Act and state auditor, they're looking at us. I mean, it's a guarantee that they're going to have to answer to Treasury, and therefore we're going to have to answer to them and Treasury. And then, as far as the premium pay is concerned, there's no guidance, it's silent, as far as how the U.S. Treasury is going to look at premium pay at this point. It's going to be treated like taxable income, but that could change as well, just like with the unemployment. They said to begin with it was going to be taxable income, and then lo and behold, sometime in January or early February, after millions of people had already filed their taxes, claiming the unemployment as income, Treasury came down and said, oh, no, no, we didn't mean it that way, we're not going to tax it, therefore, there were lots of people who either had to amend their tax return, or wait on Treasury to do that for them. So those are some of the questions, but as I said, it's pretty clear to me, I posed this question directly to Cara Malonzi with the School of Government during our last office hours webinar, and I said, okay, we know that certain departments, like our paramedics, are on the front line, that's a no-brainer. We know that some of our other public safety folks are, have been, or public health folks have been right on the front of patient care, or testing, or vaccination, can we go ahead and do premium pay for them? And typical attorney response was, it depends. She made the comment that she wouldn't give me a direct answer, but that that would be something we'd want to talk to our county attorney about. But I do know this, that if I read the statute directly, if I read the statute directly, it's pretty clear that those frontline workers who have direct exposure would qualify. So that's kind of where we are right now.
Well, if they don't know that, so...
Well, they'll know by the time they audit it, though, and that's, you know, that's the thing that I want to urge you, as you make your decisions, look at the areas that you can, that we can feel very certain about, and then, as we said before, this is money that we don't have to obligate until 2024, so, you know, I would urge the board to look at the areas, it's pretty black and white, do what you feel like you're comfortable with, but the areas that are still gray, I urge caution.
Thank you, Ms. Garland. And that's kind of where we understand that the area is into, there are some questions throughout the area. So with that being said, we just put down some recommendations from item two on the agenda, as you see, assigning the departments that are, basically some recommendations that are obvious in the act, as Ms. Garland said, to qualify, and then give an immediate payment. Now, potentially, until we get, obviously, all the information that we're comfortable making a decision on, a little bit less than the maximum, $13 an hour, so that we have better information when the final rule comes down.
Can you define that a little bit better, you mean $13 an hour? They don't want to say that.
The premium pay, we can pay up to an additional $13 an hour. So let's say if somebody's making $15 an hour, then you layer that on top for that period of time. Up to $13 per hour, it can go retroactively to January 27, 2020, and go forward from that point, okay? With a max of $25,000 per employee. And we can also use the money to pay the FICA and benefits. Now, the question I got from the North Carolina perspective is, if you pay out, I know like if you're paying like a severance, if somebody quits, or you terminate them, severance is not considered income for retirement, and I don't think the NC Treasury knows yet as to whether they'll, you know, how they'll count the premium pay. But it could, if Treasury said we can pay in retirement on that, then that would also include retirement.
So I would have to go back to your actual hours part?
Yes.
From 27, 20?
Yes, and you go to, you know, whatever point forward. I know, I reached out to Swain County, and what they did was, they've already given some money out to their public safety workers, and they gave, based on hours between March 1 of 2021 and current, because they said, you know, that's when they had felt the largest brunt of the pandemic, and for sick employees, and so on. That is up to the board entirely, you know, how you decide to do that.
The $25,000, is that per employee? Is that for all of them, or is that per year? Do we run out?
In total.
In total.
In total.
That's just a lump sum, if they can actually, that's the max.
The max, yeah.
Twenty-five thousand is the max?
Yeah, so, for instance, yeah, we, just to give you, for example, we got folks who, you know, work many, many hours, for, for instance, for EMS. If you did the calculation of the $13 times those many, many hours, it'd go way above $25,000, so the max would be $25,000.
So would it be simple down there? If we went all the way to 27, 20, I would take a guess and say that all of them would have that max.
Yeah, unless they were like part-timers that, you know, if you looked at it only on hourly, on hours, you may have some part-time who would not have had that, meaning they may not have maxed out, but for the majority, pretty much all of your full-time permanent are going to, would hit that max.
You'd be separate, just count the bottom of the just flat rate?
You have, you've got lots of options.
Yeah, that's...
I can calculate it, any, any way.
And that goes to item three. Thanks, Ms. Garland. Again, board, some board options for consideration. That item A, that's that tier suggestion that Commissioner Nelson suggested. Departments to sign for the immediate payment, which is an option. Amount of payment per employee, if you want to do, like going back to what we said, if we weren't sure, we wanted to divvy all what we have received to date out, and we didn't want to do that, because we don't know for sure the stipulations until October, you pick a flat amount, and how you want to do that, based on hours, other methods, any designation based on employment status with the county, part-time versus full-time, and then departments to consider, to potentially add for future dispersments, if any. So it's really going to be, like I said, more of a workshop item, and come up to what the board feels is the best way to kind of get something out to our folks, you know, as soon as possible, in the realm of getting some of this money spent.
So just to give you an example again, you know, and I think I quoted some of these emails. Swain County...
Did they make a statement, 24 hours, full-time?
They gave a 15, they said anyone who had worked in the, well, I'm sorry, I said that wrong, a minute ago. Anybody who had worked between March 1 of 2020 and March 30 of 2021, got a $1,500 per person premium pay. That's what Swain County did. Cherokee County, at this point, Randy Wiggins emailed me back and said, they're waiting the final guidance, they've not utilized anything for premium pay yet, and they're waiting on that final guidance as to what is acceptable. He said he'd seen where several counties had deemed all of their employees as essential, and intend to provide some premium or bonus pay. However, information I have today suggests that more than 50% of employees' time is be dedicated to COVID response. So Cherokee County is taking the more conservative approach. They're doing a wait-and-see for the final rule. I went back and I said, well, I thought you guys did something about December, did y'all not do anything using CARES Act money? And he said, no, but they did give a cost of living adjustment of 3%, like in December, to all the employees, but it wasn't, it was county dollars that did that. So you've got different options there. You can take it and do it proportionally, you know, say, here's the total hours that everybody in that department, or that group of employees worked for X period, and based on the hours that they worked, we can divvy it up that way. Or like Swain County, you could give a flat amount per person, based on the departments that you designate to begin with, that you know that you can hang your hat on. There's a multitude of different ways to do it. As long as you stay within the $13 per hour, and on top of that, the $25,000.
$13 an hour doesn't have issues, obviously.
Correct. I mean, you could say, we'll pay everybody $4 extra an hour, and see how that works, or, you know, whatever that magic number is. You could say, I'll pay part of it now, and then wait a little while.
How many full-time employees at the EMS?
13.
13, and then I've got three part-time?
Fourteen, can you hear?
Thirteen, count myself.
My recommendation would be something similar to what Swain County did. Get something out there to them, and that number or more, until we can get the, all the great information that they're supposed to be coming down to us. I'd be happy to have an immediate payment.
Kim's got this whole super into finance, all the maintenance, and she's not... Thank you.
Actually, I don't think that's a large credit for me. I'd like to make some more of that.
But now, Swain County also elected to use some of the fund for other projects.
Yes.
And some of the others in the area use general fund money to also provide some...
And the pay that was done before this.
That's right.
Yes.
Mike and Kevin.
Yeah.
How can they use it for other projects?
There is other things you can use.
Yeah, there's those, basically have those four or five broad, how many does this say? Those four or five broad things that can go toward. It's number one, address COVID public health mitigation efforts, which that would mean, doing vaccination events, cost of testing, or whatever, you know, actually the public health response. Address negative COVID economic impacts, that would be giving people housing assistance, or whatever. Replace lost government revenues, which my first reaction to that was, we don't have that problem, but I'm being required to do that calculation, and it's much different. It's good old Treasury kind of math, don't make any sense, so we may or may not have that premium pay. And then, infrastructure work or stewardship broadband. If you recall, on August 6th, I said, local governments, unless the General Assembly Act, can't do anything as far as broadband is concerned. What their initial guidance was on these public health mitigation and addressing COVID economic impacts, especially the economic impacts, the state's probably going to do most of that, and then public health mitigation, they made leverage money for us. We can do stuff with housing, and that's something that you might want to think about, keeping some of the money to the side for, because I know Dogwood Trust is very interested in leveraging money, bringing money into these counties to help with low and moderate income, and which would be projects that the RDA works on actively, that that money can be match money, the ARPA money can be match money for them. And also, part of the public health mitigation is also addressing the mental health impacts and substance abuse impacts. So there's, there are other options, other things that the money can be dedicated toward.
How many nurses do you think we have that would be considered essential at this point? Before long contact?
Once a year.
I'm assuming that's not the other job that...
Four or five.
Yeah, four or five. The ones that are conducting the tests, is every day they're within, you know, they're right there with them too, inside.
Can we contract you with two babies?
Right. But y'all, you know, you do have some, which is in the very fuzzy area right now, you know, some of the work that the Health Department does is human services related work, where they are having face-to-face contact with people who could potentially have the virus. But frontline are going to be your nurses and staff?
I think that's only first, on that round.
On that first round.
This is separate from everything else. Is that what?
Broadens.
Then we're just, it's after this, yes, that's right.
It's just something to follow some guidance from the School of Government.
These part-time workers end up working full-time, I would worry. The last two that hired have not, and there's another one that hasn't. Really, the chart is only two that's really worked, which would be two, this part-time works for HR, and the place we'll save for the future.
So I'll ask my board members, if we had a clear understanding from the federal government today, is there anybody that would object to the public safety EMS employees getting the maximum benefit allowed, under the current guidance?
I'm a bit poor, but I think, I think there are EMS, if anybody deserved it, they deserved it, and then the lesser ones that have been, that have worked direct contact, followed behind them.
I agree with you.
We have the EMS staff, and I assume that the nurses, the Health Department done the testing and the shots, so I'm thinking that's our main frontline, is that not pretty much correct?
I think so.
For those that actually come in contact with the exposure, and the intent to be exposed, I think that's the ones we need...
Our nurses, what is, focal contact is EMS, because they had outside drive-through to do their testing, and when you come to register for shots, you have to sign the symptoms, you got sent around, so by ground workers, it's a favor for our contact, and some of the more impacted in the building are helping.
Well, we need to figure out how to find these, and we came this, we got to figure out how to find it, and if they say anything, then I'm going to find it.
Is that where we can get Jay to make that definition of whether or not legal...
Or let's have a little target, like, fashion. So that way we're...
Well, it's broad, but it also gives us that, you know, I'll reiterate, some of this is coming from the, you know, the people that are assessing these programs. Local governments have broad authority to determine which workers are essential, but they must regularly perform in-person work, interact with others that work, or physically handle items handled by others. That's clear, as we agree, that obviously EMS, that helps you in that regard, and then we may be good, look at, just some ideas, look at that, maybe not necessarily a tier or a tier, as to who we want to see be the lower on that totem pole, to get some or minimum, that might be the questions we need to ask Jay for clarity.
You see, you could actually, during the governor's declaration, you had to take and submit a form determining whether or not you were essential or non-essential, and it had guidelines to be able to meet. And so, you know, some organizations meet it, and some organizations didn't, depending on what type of organization they've had. The EMS, there's no doubt that they did follow, and I know some workers at the other one.
That's right.
But there are some cases where some of the counties just said, everybody's essential.
And that's probably the reason we're having such a rough time. The South Florida counties have been called in, but spent it on... Besides for these counties that have been called in and voted, but spent it on everybody.
Yeah. And my opinion is for those, those that have to face it every day, looking face of someone that was, that had it, I think they, they need to get as much as they possibly can. And I think they need to get the max of what we can do. If it's not all at one time, they'll, they'll get it over a period of time.
That was the thought too, until you get the, until we find out for sure. If we find out for sure October, we could potentially do it in a quarterly thing. You get them maybe that max, especially for the frontline workers. And then instead of expending all that money, not knowing for sure, we may or may not have to pay something back, you can also offer them more money in a quarterly draw or, you know, every two months or however you wanted to spend it out in payments. And that could potentially help tax-wise too. Because if you give somebody, say, that twenty-five thousand dollar lump sum, you're going to pay twenty percent, you're not going to get twenty percent of that if it's taxed. Whereas if you give them payments to equal up to, they're going to put more, more money in their pocket.
Well, in a, in a sense, if, if October is when we can actually start dispersing the money, it's
Well, we can now.
October can be the final guidance.
We're, we're going to get the final guidance. I want to make sure there's no confusion.
That areas that are, that are obvious.
Good. The ones that you're in question of that, which you made a great point, that those, those ones that we're talking about, thinking about, obviously that aren't frontline, which we're not talking about EMS or probably the Health Department, those we may need to wait till October to talk to Jay and get the final, you know, final rules. So that's basically
I think that looking, looking, looking was tied off to some of that. The EMS and nurses, like that could be a lot. So as far as taxes, probably they must finish what they missed.
Breaking it up into, you know, smaller increments, because technically, according to the Internal Revenue Code, any bonus is a flat twenty-two percent better withholding. And I would also advise, you know, for our folk that are going to get these payments over this period, it might be good to straddle the year from a tax perspective, because if they're typically in a fifteen percent tax bracket, but a twenty-five percent, twenty-five thousand dollar bonus in one year, could bump them into the higher bracket, it's going to cost them more. And then I would strongly advise them to make sure, even though we've done the withholding according to the code, that they sit down with their tax advisor and make sure that that's the right amount, that's the sufficient amount. Because it could, even if we break it into twenty-one and twenty-two, it could potentially bump them on up into something they don't want to be in, and they need to do that plan ahead. So I don't want people owing on their taxes and
How, how does that look though, as far as amount, what is that, a thousand less than a month? Is that five thousand per quarter or what? Is there a sweet spot?
I would say something like, just to be safe, like twenty-five hundred or three, you know, twenty-five hundred per, per quarter. Just again, so that we're not, they're not ending up in taxes.
Thousand more.
Yeah. That don't get, and that'd be above and beyond what they get on their payroll tax, regular payroll.
It's fifty-five hundred dollars on a twenty-five hour. Is that three-five?
No. So by the time you take the state tax, uh, yeah, please. You're looking at thirty-six percent off the top, so that's pretty steep.
Yes. Because it's considered as a gift, it's not a
Yeah.
So they're about an option. You want to have the option now, that's what you're trying to catch up to. Let me flip the map out. What about John?
I would urge the staff to sit down, you know, if you guys give them the option of how they want to get it, they need to sit down with their tax advisor before they make their decision.
I have an idea about that.
Is there a, there are initially described back to
What did they say?
Discussion about an option.
Give, give them the option of how they want to spread it out, take it all at once or spread it out.
You can tell them to turn this light off, they
Yes. I think I can tell that you're upset with it.
Is it even up?
Yeah, they're not on.
It's, uh
If you'll turn them off, I'll turn it on.
Kim, there were
Just make sure your mics are off or it'll pop.
Still we're off.
We're lost without Kim.
We are.
Where are the keys to that room, Kim?
Oh my God, it's in the office, they're in there, my dear.
Okay.
If I call floor.
Press on?
So what I'm hearing today, you all have me up now. We don't want to pay it all before October or whatever, till we get that final declaration on what can we do?
I don't know, that's my
Well
For the, for the one secondary question.
I think that's for everybody, isn't it?
Well, it's pretty clear in my mind, after reading the statute, that those frontline, like your EMS, that direct, based, the way I'm looking at it, you're face-to-face day in, day out contract.
But then, you know, let's, let's pay it.
And then any other departments where we've got a question where it's not clear, you would want to wait till October.
So, uh, we want to give the employees the option of getting a lump sum bonus before taking it over to regular time.
I think we give them the option to be able to decide if they want to take and get it quarterly or if they want it all at one lump sum, because those are the ones who have to pay the tax. And those are the ones that has their own finance instead of us. We're giving them the option to be able to, to take that opportunity whichever way they would like to.
So we know what we're going to pay the full-time people. What are we going to do about the part-time? That's going to have to get time sheet reviews, basically with this calculator, counting hours and
We've got two part-time, it'll be based by as little time we got with the hours at work. It's going to be Charlie and Billy, you say?
Yes.
Yeah, you have to check up on their time.
We've got fifteen in full-time, basically.
And then you're saying, you haven't been here before, you said, mom?
Mom, what have been happening?
What, I mean, here's an idea on your part-timers that don't qualify as full-time, you could just basically base it on their hours worked against
Prorated.
And prorated, and that way it's
I think that's
Yeah.
Yeah, if you've got new ones
Yeah.
You've got thousands of them.
Yeah. And, you know, well, the question to me would be, you know, what's the timeframe that you look at those hours? Go all the way back to January twenty-seventh of twenty twenty, which is when President Trump did the declaration, and move forward, and what's the cutoff? Do you want me to look at it at the end of
I think the fiscal year would be.
Things like that would be easiest.
Yeah, I think we do it the fiscal year.
Okay. So do it like fiscal twenty-one, and we just closed? Okay.
Do we have a debate? This one thing is turned on to Kim here.
I think we have the key is
Is that, you know, that's turned off?
That part
Guys, mics off?
Make sure the mics are off.
Make sure the mics is off.
All right, see if it's on, we should be good.
Yep.
Can you hear it now, Pam?
Yes, what can you do to that?
Don't get ready to make a mose.
Yay.
Do we have a motion to give the opportunity for lump sum or quarterly payments? Have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
We have a second?
Sure.
I'll vote.
Ten seconds.
Dale.
Mr. Wiggins.
Dale.
And I want to make sure I understand, it will be EMS, all full-time, we'll get the full twenty-five thousand dollars. Part-time will be based on prorated hours. And then because the nurses were frontline, nurses go into this group as well.
And there shouldn't be no questions from this October, whatever thing, whatever they come up with for that.
Right.
Then work.
Yeah, and then, and then in October, when the final rule comes down, then the board will look at other groups.
Then we can find out about dispatchers.
Yes.
Sheriff's Department.
Jail.
Jail.
Yes.
Transit.
Yes. And human, they, they, they mentioned human services, but didn't give very good guidance on what they mean by human service.